Good.
Okay, welcome everybody. I'd like to call this Catawba County Virtual Emergency Meeting Order here on August Field 2020 at 5:30 PM. Before we start the meeting and before I turn it over to Vice Chair Ms. Becky Britton, I want to thank our Board of Education for coming online again tonight. Our administration, there's been a lot of concerns as to why was this meeting called? Well, this meeting was called because our Board of Education needs as much information, as much due data as possible. We all know that things change day to day. And I can assure you that our administration and our Board of Education has a lot at stake on decisions that have been made. A lot of us have families, kids in school, some of us have kids in the classrooms, some of us have grandkids. And we're all concerned. You know, it's not like that we're here basically to rule all decisions are made. Number one, safety. That has always been one of my goals, and I will say that having worked with this Board of Education, safety is top priority. Having worked with Dr. Stover and his cabinet, safety is number one on the list. Safety can mean a lot of things. Tonight, we're going to hear a lot of new updated information and updated data that will help all of us move forward, whether you're a parent or a staff member, or grandparent, or whatever. I'm sure this information tonight is going to be helpful to all of us. With that, we will move forward, and I will now turn the meeting over to Becky Britton.
Okay, thank you Glenn. At this time, we will have our moment of silence, and then Ms. Kathy Starnes will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand if you will.
If everyone would join me in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Starnes. At this time, I ask you for any adjustments that need to be made to the agenda. Do we have any this evening?
No, Madam Vice Chair, at this time, the administration does not.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I ask for the approval of the agenda. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you Glenn. Do I have a second?
This is Kathy. I'll make the second.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to go across my screen. Kathy?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Myself is yes. David Britton is not present at this time. At this time, I turn it over to Ms. Crystal Davis with the Public Hearing and Public Comments section.
Thank you, everyone. As you know, our comments are not, we're not having an in-person meeting at all today. There's no, the boardroom is closed, and all of our public comments were made online today. And we wanted to make sure, the board wanted to make sure that at every meeting, even though we're not required to accept in our regular meetings, that at every meeting, parents have input. And we had a lot of input today. So we have received 491, and this was as of about 5:25. I think I've gotten about, excuse me, about four sits then, but I've been unable to read them. We got a total of 491 comments. I have read all of those comments except for the last several that we received after 5:25. And I have tabulated basically the stance of both community members, parents, students. We had numerous healthcare providers that offered their opinions as well. And the results are of the 491 comments, 88% of those were in favor of in-school learning Plan B. Some wanted to go fully 100% in-person. I did not disaggregate those because of Governor Cooper's orders and restrictions in place. 12% either wanted to delay for several weeks or go completely 100% online and have that evaluated at a later time. Of the 12% that wanted to delay, I would say about 40, excuse me, of the 12% that were calculated wanting to go online, I would say about 40% of those wanted just to delay for, similar to Hickory City and some other surrounding or other school systems that they've chosen to delay. I cannot possibly read all of those comments tonight, but I want to assure the public that your voice has been heard. And we have taken your comments to heart, the administration has, and the board has. And we appreciate the input. Does anybody have any questions about comments? Okay, with that, with no questions, the Public Comments and Public Hearing section of this meeting is closed.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. I will say I've read quite a few of them. I probably didn't get to read as many as Crystal did, but your comments was appreciated. I really was excited about getting that. I think my phone kind of blew up as the day went on, but it was good to see that people are concerned. We'll now turn the meeting over to Dr. Stover and his staff.
Thank you Chairman Fulbright, members of the Board of Education. I want to thank you folks for allowing us the opportunity to provide you answers to a lot of great questions you all have to ensure the safe arrival of our students and staff in the upcoming weeks. And so I applaud your efforts for that. Our staff has worked hard to get answers to your questions. And also, I want to thank our local health department again for all they've done. And so in your board packet, you will see that you have all the answers in a spreadsheet. And so what we're going to do, with your permission, is start at the first question and move down. And then what we'll try to do is highlight some of those supporting documents that we've had either through survey results or health department links. And that's the way we'll kind of ping pong this, so each one of our staff members have the opportunity to participate. So we'll start with the first one. Mr. Sharp and I are responsible for it. And the question was, is can, will we have any more data from our staff? And the answer to that is, is on Thursday, I want to thank Rhonda Pollak and our Catawba County Association of Educators. Rhonda, Ms. Pollak put together a survey and then asked for permission to get input. So Ms. Pollak created the survey and sent it out. After she wasn't getting a lot of hits this morning, I think she told me she had about 10 or 11% responding. She asked if I would send it out, so I did. And I think you'll see that we've had a good result into all staff, a little over 1,600 responses. And so Marty, I'll turn it over to you to explain the input from our staff, from our Catawba County Association of Educators.
Okay, so you should see on your screen, this is the actual form that was sent out by Ms. Pollak, again, from the CCAE. I thought I'd just kind of scroll through this to let you see what the questions were. They did ask the current position in Catawba County. They did ask the grade span that was represented. They ask, how do you feel about going face-to-face instruction during the COVID-19 pandemic? And you can see the four choices. I will note that in this kind of a form, there are the opportunities to actually take more than one, and I'll explain that in just a few minutes when we look at results. You see the question I have requested to teach remotely this school year? If they're a member of NCAE and other concerns at the very end. So what I'm going to do is I actually compiled those results and making sure that I see this, let's go full screen. And let me back up just a little bit to where you can see the entire screen. All right, so you'll notice that we did have 1,693 responses. Again, this did go out to not just teachers, but all staff. And so this document, again, it is linked within the spreadsheet that the Dr. Stover had mentioned previously. But this document is interactive. So when we look at this graph, this pie graph, you'll notice that we have the majority, you know, slot majority at 27.5% said that they are ready to go back and will be upset if they have to go to remote teaching again. If I roll over the, let's see, the 24.6% said yes and no. They feel confident to go back one day but feel stressed the next. We see, I believe that's 23.7% or 401 responses, no, they do not feel comfortable returning to work until the COVID numbers are in line with the CDC's recommendation of 5% transmission or lower in the county. And then 19.7.
Better process, and we can do it now, okay? Or you want to wait till then?
Okay, we should be back up. Again, my apologies, not sure what happened with the stream, but we are back up. Again, I think we stopped off at any questions from the board? How deep do you want to go with this data? And I will go ahead and go back, drill all the way up to the top to where you can see the information. Any questions from the board?
Marty, I think we'll move on and come back with questions and answers at the end.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm going to go ahead and stop the share then.
Thank you Marty. Will you pull up the questions and answers, if you don't mind? Or can you pull up the 8, 5:20 spreadsheet and then we can click on those to show those ancillary documents, if that's okay?
Yeah, I would, but this changed. If you give me just another sec, I'm not sure what is going on.
No hurry, I can explain. Number two, so I'll proceed.
If you could, that would be great. Thank you.
No, no big deal. Thanks Marty. So one of the questions was about the health department doing a presentation and showing the trend of COVID-19 in our county. And so our county has done a great job with the dashboard. You saw that embedded in your document. And that gives you guys the trend since March something. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look at it, but Marty's pulling it up right now. So this is the chart that our health department has asked us to look at. These are the facts. The current one is the new daily cases that you'll see on there. And about transmission rates and whatnot. But you also see in the public health question and answer from our health department, they provide this, but they also stated that the dashboard contains details for data points to explain what the data represent and how they are sourced. It is important to note that the daily and total case counts include only non-duplicated lab confirmed cases among county residents. And they also state that not all cases of COVID-19 are tested. So this does not represent the total number of people who currently have or have COVID-19 in the county. But that does give you a good indication of the results in Catawba County. I would also, one of the questions that we, that came to us was about this idea of 5% positive rate and the CDC's recommendation not to have school with a 5% positive rate. So as I was communicating with the health department, trying to find that in the documents, of course, our health director could not find it. I could not find it, contacted the state. So the CDC technically has not recommended 5%. Ms. McCracken let us know that one of the doctors on an interview talked about 5%. And I think then, in the same case, there was an interview too, the surgeon general talked about 10%. But as we follow CDC guidance and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Service guidance, there is not a positivity rate that states whether schools should be in or not. What the health department has asked us to look at is the guidance from the governor and gave us, back to us that, you know, starting under Plan B, that, and you'll see it in your packet, but for, under, we'll have to make those individual decisions for our county within, with our Department of Health and Human Services. But there's not technically a number. And we got that question quite a bit, and it's a good question. But right now, there's just not a number that's recommended by the CDC according to our health department. So we'd have to make decisions about school shutdowns and continuations in consultation with our local health department. I'll move on to, after looking at that, our next question is, is can we refer back to the HR survey about the 97% of teachers who wanted to work? So Marty, if you wouldn't mind, as we shared the survey with you, but there was a question to see that again. So we will present that to you at this time. So this went out, I think, July 13th, and you know, there's a big difference between July 13th and August 5th. And so I was glad to hear from our folks again, but so in there, Marty, can you pull up the results?
Sure.
Specifically, the question was about the 97% of people who wanted to return to work. And so we'll show you that chart. So you see, we had 1,432 responses, and then when you scroll down, we had several questions in there in regards to what they're an employee, if they're licensed or not. And this is something you've seen before, but Marty, if you could specifically go to that particular chart.
My apologies. All right. Primary school.
It's about five down, I think.
Okay. Again, let's see, how concerned?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Right there.
There we go.
So this was the question we asked, hey, are you, are you planning on coming back to your assigned site? And you can see that nearly 97% of our folks at that time, again, difference of July 13th and August 5th of that. So we wanted to show you that. That was a question that our board wanted to take a look at. So I think that's pretty self-explanatory. The next question was about other districts. What are other districts doing around us? And I sent to you earlier today, and it's also in your packet. But Marty, if you go to Q4, the spreadsheet of what are people doing around us? So we can take a look at that. But I'll, as we pull up the sheet, this is every district in the state of North Carolina.
So actually, I brought that together in another graph to easily see this, and then we can look at the chart if that's okay.
Yeah, sure, sure.
What actually went through is, went through the data, compiled that data, and looked at what districts were at Plan B, what Plan C, and you do see in front of you, there were two other pieces there, and I believe that was individual counties, individual LEAs, Plan B for two weeks, then Plan C, and bring pre-K third back to school and place four through 12 on remote learning. So it was kind of a hybrid. And so what you see in front of you is Plan B is actually the 49.6% of the state is currently in, planning on Plan B. And 48.7% are actually moving towards the remote in Plan C. So again, I will, let me share that data with you that we pulled that from.
The NCSSA is North Carolina Superintendent's, no, School Board, no. North Carolina State Superintendent Association, and they've been tracking this for superintendents and boards to be able to look at. Looks like Marty highlighted some of the school districts.
So those, I did not actually highlight those. I'm not exactly sure why they were highlighted. But I will say, the reason there are two columns here is because there are some cases where there's some lengthy paragraph submissions and basically just transpose that to B in order to be able to show that in a data view.
Okay, thank you Marty.
No problem.
The ones currently around us, Newton Conover is currently with B, Iredale Statesville, Alexander, Caldwell, Cleveland, Lincoln, Gaston, Allegheny, Avery, Watauga. And those are the ones going from the top of my head. And again, this just gives you an idea of what each district is doing. Again, the governor said, of course, we can come in at B, but you could tighten up if you so choose. But we wanted you to have those responses, so you can take a look at those at your leisure as well.
And I will say, I hate to interrupt, but I do believe it looks like the reason those are highlighted is because they're in our region, is what it looks like.
Ah, okay, thank you, thank you. All right.
Could we scroll, do we scroll down and see Hickory Public?
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Sure, scroll down to, we'll see Hickory, currently at Plan C.
My understanding is they're doing four and a half weeks, I think they said, of virtual, for four and a half weeks of virtual. And then they're going to reassess, I think, is my understanding.
What about Newton Conover, please?
Newton, well, I went the wrong way, my apologies. Plan B.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay, so there you are. You can tell that quite a bit of difference from each county. All right, so have, the next question, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gibbs, but there's a question about, given the requests by teachers and TAs, who expressed concern about coming back? And I'll turn that over to Mr. Gibbs to discuss that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stover, Chairman Fulbright, members of the board. The question was, have we had any situation at this time that a teacher assistant who has expressed a concern about coming back to work in person that has been turned down? At this time, there's no option for teacher assistants to telework? And I did list on your sheet, document, that the leave option for teacher assistants. If a teacher assistant has a COVID-related issue or has a concern about coming back to work, they are, they may be eligible for the First Coronavirus Recovery Act, which allows them 10 days of paid leave. They also will be eligible, if they are eligible, for Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, which is up to 12 weeks of unpaid leave for that employee of job protection. And then we also allow them to use their accrued leave. That is, at this current time, that is the leave option for teacher assistants.
I will clarify, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but the option to use the accrued leave is in conjunction if they qualify for the FMLA.
Yeah.
Mr. Gibbs, have there been any teachers who requested to teach or work remotely that have not been able to be accommodated? I guess they fall under these same guidelines, but have we had any that have been, have requested to work remotely and haven't been able to be accommodated?
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. And Ray Thompson is going to share with you a chart a little later on to express that. We try our very best to accommodate those teachers, and our certified staff do have an option to telework, of course, they can do that. It's feasible for them to telework. But if not, we do, we are going to try to accommodate those employees. And we're going to share that information with the board later in the presentation. Does that answer your question, Ms. Barnett?
And it.
Yes, thank you.
Again, that is based on, the option to telework is based on them having an underlying medical condition. Otherwise, even online Catawba teachers are reporting to work. They're reporting to the building.
And I'd like to add, Ms. Barnett, all of our employees that had a concern about returning to work, we require them to fill out an accommodation form. We met with our board attorney, we're advised to do that. That way, we have that documentation there for any employee that has requested or have a concern about returning to work. And we, go ahead, Chris.
We're evaluating those on a case-by-case basis. Everybody's being treated consistently in light of the qualifications they have to meet for leave. We are not offering at this point just a leave of absence unless they qualify for the emergency leaves that have been set up by the state, the 10 days, or the extended FMLA. Does that make sense, Dr. Barnett?
Yes, yes. I do want to clarify and make sure that I understand. Online Catawba teachers will still report to a building to do their teaching. They just don't have face-to-face. They'll just have their classes online, but they do report to a building. And those teachers, though, that are on Plan B, I understand that. But do we have any teachers who have requested to teach on online Catawba who've not been able to be accommodated? I mean, are you aware of any that have requested to, and we've not been able to accommodate that? Not that they have an underlying condition, but that that's their preference, not to have face-to-face classes?
No, we have very few, Leslie, and Ray, you can jump in if you would like, that have requested to be online, but they're immune compromised. Those teachers will not have to report to the building.
Okay.
We need to accommodate those teachers.
All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I'll move on to the next question, was about how does COVID-19 trends data compare from a month ago to now in Catawba County, which is in that chart you guys got to see? And you can see every day by going to that site. to now in Catawba County, which is in that chart you guys got to see, and you can see every day by going to that site. But how has it particularly influenced assisted living facilities and the old, the old, an older population? So according to our Health Department, cases involving residents of congregate care settings such as nursing homes account for 3.8% of all cases in Catawba County residents as of 8/4/2020. These individuals are some of our community's most vulnerable people and typically have multiple underlying medical conditions. Because the nursing home setting and population are so different from schools, comparing the two in terms of COVID is not possible. The overwhelming majority of Catawba County COVID-19 cases are among people who are out and about in the community, and most cases can be traced to familiar causes of family gatherings, people returning from vacations, adults who have been exposed at work, and household contacts of positive cases. So that is from our Health Department. Moving on to the next question. Are we able to staff our schools? What are the numbers looking like at each school as far as teachers willing to return? Of course, we've gotten to see that. Are teachers putting in for retirement and or leaving the profession in our county due to COVID-19 fears? Is that Ray or Chris?
Yeah, both. We're gonna, I'll start off, first of all, to answer your question, are we able to staff our schools? Yes, we are. We've been very blessed to have the staff that we have, the employees that we have, that have expressed that they are willing to come back and do their part. The second thing on retirement, in 2018, 2019, we have 73 retirees. And in 2019 through, 2020, we had 56 retirees. And 2020 to 2021, from July the 1st of this year, we've had 10. So we don't see, we did not see a significant increase, and we're not seeing that with retirement. I think that's what the board was asking. So Marty, if you would go click on that link, and Ray's gonna speak a little bit about our current status with employees.
All right. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Marty. That's better. Good evening. Thank you, members of the board. I have pulled data from our return-to-work spreadsheet that teachers have, have been filling out, and we have folks going in and making changes to their initial responses from July. Our benefits coordinator is accepting paperwork and phone calls and emails each day with folks who are looking for either small accommodations or, in some cases, teleworking. And as you see on the spreadsheet, we've got, I've listed folks by their category of employment. If they're certified, classified, you can see if they have completed forms. And in many cases, when folks are requesting teleworking, we're asking for not only the accommodations request that's available to all employees in the CCS Engage HR folder, but also they have to supply some medical documentation from their medical provider. If their forms are complete, you can see that. You can also scroll down, Marty, if you don't mind. Yeah, keep going. You can see our incomplete forms, folks who will be on maternity leave, folks who are out for other reasons but will return to work shortly after school starts. You can see our classified, folks who have completed forms, as well as those individuals who are in process. They have sent in some information but not completed at all, and our benefits coordinator has been trying to be in contact with them to make sure that we get everyone covered. Anybody who has a request, we want to be sure that we can process through that. If they have qualified, qualifying issues, then we want to make sure that they are well taken care of. In total, we have 39 certified folks currently, as of about 5 o'clock today, who had submitted requests, and 14 classified staff who had indicated that they had some issue and may not be able to return without an accommodation. Are there questions that I might answer for you?
I think, Mr. Fulbright, did you want to do those now or wait till the end, or?
Uh, Ron. Wait, wait, wait to the, uh, wait to the, okay, we're gonna wait until the end. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Ray and Chris, and, and your whole HR department has been us. Thank you all. You guys have done a great job talking to all of our employees who contacted you guys, so I just want to thank you guys. What are our current enrollment numbers at each school versus where they were last year? I'll turn this over to Dan Moore. Marty, if you could pull up that document?
Working on it now.
Dan, we're pulling the lefty out of the bullpen, so get ready here.
Well, I'm, I'm a righty, but, but we can make the signal for the lefty. Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. Stover, what you have in front of you is our current enrollment numbers. This was pulled from Power School on Tuesday, August the 4th. It's a very simplistic document. And the number that is under the column Month 5 PMR, that's from our Principal's Monthly Report, our last one that we actually had posted before COVID hit. And you can see that there are some differences. I will tell you that there are multiple families that have yet to enroll, and also there's multiple families that have yet to withdraw, that might have moved to another area and haven't requested records as of this time. So at this point, we're 135 students less in total than we were at the end of the fifth month, but I would caution you and tell you that we will have more enrollments, and they will exceed our withdrawals. This includes our online Catawba numbers as well. So fairly typical numbers for the start of the year, because we have quite a few walk-ups in which our kinders begin their school careers. Any questions at this time, or would you like to wait till the end with regard to this data?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. The next, the next question was about, from, for the Health Department pertaining to schools starting back. What was the recommendation of the Health Department for schools starting back? And I think probably the, the best place to, to take a look at that was under, is, is the virus under control in Catawba County? I've had several conversations with, with our Health Department. The, the answer to that question is, the situation with COVID-19 in Catawba County continues to evolve and can change rapidly. Currently, our situation is mostly stable and reflects statewide trends, but there remains significant room for improvement. According to NCDHHS, our actions to slow the spread of the virus are having an impact on stabilizing most key indicators, specifically since the start of the statewide mask requirement at the end of June. This illustrates how important the three Ws are of wash, wait, and wear. And with the three Ws, with the, with the three Ws, our Health Department has said that lowers the risk from staying three feet apart from 12.8% to 2.6%. If you maintain six feet, that doubles that protection. For mask wearing, it is, if you don't, it decreases risk of spread by one-half to two-thirds by wearing a mask. And hand washing, thorough hand washing can reduce the spread of respiratory illness by 20%. So there are several other questions that are in that document as well that probably, that you, you'll see the answers to. But for right now, I think that answers that question to the best of our ability, according to the Health Department. Okay. So what, will a school system be financially penalized by the state if we choose to move from Plan C to Plan B, or vice versa? Ms. Carla Aldridge.
Hi, everyone. I checked with Alexis Shouse. She's the Director of School Business for DPI yesterday. And we would not be penalized. She said, "Our allotments are our allotments regardless of whether we open under Plan B or Plan C." The thing we have to keep in mind, and I guess for me be a little fearful of, is that if we are not within 2% or 100 students of the ADM that we were allotted on, which is 15,747 students, if we don't achieve that during our first or second month, as legislation stands, we would incur a reversion, and we have for the last two years. So that, that, just because of our declining enrollment, that happens. However, she said there was a lot of talk about holding school districts harmless for their ADM. We don't know if it's going to happen or not, but I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that it does. So, but, but there are no financial implications regardless of online or in-person instruction. Do you have any questions for me?
I just want to let the public know, every now and then you see somebody that may go offline for a minute. You know, our computers are, sometimes they have to upgrade and stuff, so if somebody goes off, they'll be back as quick as they can.
Thank you, Chairman Fulbright. Thank you, Ms. Aldridge.
Uh huh.
Our, the next question is, are teachers prepared to move to Plan C if necessary? Our first appearance of Mrs. Deanna Finger this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, folks. It's good to see everybody. We feel extremely confident in the ability to move to Plan C if needed. I did put in a few comments, just to remind you, I know you're very aware of what I put there, because you were a part of the process of approving our Plan C Remote Learning Plan. If you remember, we did get that approved on July 13th, and have now turned that into the state. We've not heard back on the plan, but we feel confident in it. So the, the piece I'll remind you about is currently, we are preparing teachers and prepping teachers for Plan B, and that instruction includes face-to-face instruction and remote instruction. What's great about that is the remote instruction piece parallels a lot to what it would look like. Not exactly, but a lot to what it would, would look like on Plan C. So the ability to move between the two, we are confident in that. The professional development we've had since March and all throughout the summer has been outstanding for our folks who have delivered that, as well as all of the input we had from teachers and administrators, some parents, into what Plan C looks like. The caveat to the whole piece that I wanted to mention tonight is, I do feel more confident in moving to Plan C when we need to. If we have had students face-to-face for an amount of time, that we can better teach them the use of the learning management system. Because as you'll remember, in the spring, in Case 5, we were all paper pencil, pretty much because we didn't have the opportunity to make sure all of those students could log into the LMS. Our teachers were using an LMS, learning management system. So now, if we can be face-to-face some with those students and make sure they understand how to do that, we think the instructional piece of moving to Plan C, this go-around, will be much better than it was in the spring. Teachers absolutely did the best they could, but we feel much more confident at this point when we're ready to move to Plan C to be able to do that. Any questions about that, or, or again, Mr. Fulbright, we'll wait on those till the end? Okay.
Thank you, Deanna. Also, she's Shelley Black out there. Good to see you. Thank you for coming. All right. The next question was about seeing the data over the last couple of weeks. But, and, but in this case, where does the data come from? And so I'll read that message from our Health Department. "The data comes from cases, hospitalizations, and deaths are all measures that we track daily in North Carolina physicians and laboratories."
Dr. Stover, I just got an email that the YouTube meeting quit working. Probably too many parents watching to make sure we have in-person school. So I don't know, Marty, if-
They may be on a delay when we had that problem earlier. I'm actually watching the, the stream right now.
Okay.
So it could be, I'm double-checking again.
It just came, it may be delayed from before.
It could be.
Okay, now, now we're hearing from a principal, it's working now.
Okay, good deal. Good deal. Yep. I, I'm assuming it's probably on the delay on their end.
So where does this data come from? The question was, "In North Carolina, physicians and laboratories are required to report all positive COVID-19 tests and deaths to public health. Those reports come in by phone, fax, and electronically directly from laboratories. We conduct a case investigation, then track these cases, most of whom are at home recovering, and follow up with hospitals on the ones where hospitalized. Death data is obtained from hospitals, congregate living facilities, and the county coroner's office. Two data categories, total tests completed and negative test results, are reported weekly based on the North Carolina Department of Health and Human, Health and Human Services data. Recovered numbers are also reported weekly and are based on public health follow-up with confirmed cases and the use of the state's definition of recovered, as you can find under the dashboard." So that tells you where the data comes from. The other question that was with us was, "The current percentage of population in Catawba County that have tested positive for COVID-19?" We generally, and this is the answer, we generally advise against using the data point to determine the impact of COVID-19 in Catawba County. As many people with COVID-19 have mild symptoms and do not seek testing, unfortunately, there's no way to truly know what percentage of Catawba County has been infected with COVID-19. Another question was about the number of ICU and other hospital beds available in Catawba County for COVID-19 patients. There is no set number of beds, according to our local Health Department, available for COVID-19 patients in Catawba County. As facilities in our area have some flexibility with their bed space, so far, our local bed availability has been stable, and we have not neared capacity. Our hospitals have also, has also have the ability to expand beyond our local capacity. Transferring patients to other facilities is needed, which already happens on a daily basis for a variety of medical issues. It is also important to note that gauging the local hospital capacity in terms of counting case numbers does not take into consideration the number of people who are hospitalized in Catawba County from other areas, nor Catawba County residents who are hospitalized in other places. So if you were, the other question was, if you're able to remove the number of nursing home and assisted living cases from these totals, what would that look like? And to answer that question, again, as I reported earlier, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to repeat that one, but 3.8% of the COVID test positives have come from assisted living facilities. And another question was about hearing from our staff. We got to see Ms. Pollack's survey earlier. And I addressed the 5% question earlier as far as the CDC's recommendation of not to open schools. However, Ms. McCracken, our local Health Department, and our state Health Department and CDC do not have an official guidance on that, but any closings or openings would take place with, in consultation with all of these individuals and/or organizations. So those were the official questions from our Board of Education. And, and so, Mr. Fulbright, I'll turn it over to you for other questions that hopefully we could address at this time.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stover. Okay. What I'm gonna do is, we're gonna, like I said, we're- Okay, what I'm going to do is, we're going to, like I said, we're going to take them one at a time, that way you can ask your questions or make comments. Kathy, let's talk to you.
Well, as of 5:00 PM, I now have two family members who have tested positive for COVID. So, my concern for other people catching it, because my family members have no idea where they got COVID from. They've social distanced, they wore their mask places, and they still contracted COVID. My, my question is going to be, for, for the administration, is if a teacher tests positive while at school, you know, what's our response time going to be in switching that person to out of class? You know, exactly how is that going to work?
I can, I can start with that. I'll start with our Health Department's response to that question that had come up that I think Ms. McCracken had added. I'm trying to find it right here, I apologize. So what are the protocols for reopening if, if, if a member of our staff or student tests positive? And of course, they refer us back to our strong schools, page nine of that, and then also to a reference guide of a screening process, but we have broken that out in HR. So, Mr. Gibbs, or Ray, can you talk to them about our HR process for that?
Okay. Can you, one of the things we've done, we've created a flowchart. The flowchart A, flowchart B, and flowchart C. And in those charts, it will have a protocol if an employee tests positive for COVID, and then the other chart, if an employee comes in contact with someone that has COVID, and then one chart, if an employee has symptoms of COVID. So basically, if you look at those charts, I don't have them, I can't pull them up right now, but...
Marty, they're in our HR Engage folder. I don't know if, if you could pull those up. They're, they're on our website, so they're accessible to the public. Are you able to pull those up, Marty?
Yes, I'm working on it right now.
You are the man. Thank you.
Right.
Marty, can you access those?
Oh. You got two mics there. So if we, the HR COVID is what we're looking at, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Which, which chart would we'd like to start with?
Chart A.
Chart A? Okay. All right. Hopefully, oh, you're not seeing that, are you? I'm, my apologies. It went to a new tab. There we go.
Yep, we can see it now. Thank you, Marty.
No problem.
So each of these charts are going to be based on the given guidance from...
Chris, can you, thank you, Chris.
From DHHS. So we have, we followed their guidance exactly, and every time they are updating their pieces, then I go in and update these charts as well. So it makes it very simple for an employee or a principal to look, figure out which, which of the three issues applies, and then they work through those steps. There has been some discussion, because two of the charts refer to a 10-day quarantine, and flowchart C, which is you come in contact with someone who has tested positive, is a 14-day quarantine. And that's really because by the time the employee finds out that the person's tested positive, in the guidance, it goes back to the last date of contact that the employee had with that person who tested positive. And oftentimes, that's well, well into the 14 days. So we have been taking calls, we've been monitoring this with principals, as we've had a few employees across the summer contact us to say, "Hey, I think I have, can you help me work through this?" We've also developed some questions for principals that we've shared with them to kind of help them understand that when someone reports, they, they may not have that full picture, they may not, everybody's nervous. So we've developed some questions for principals to ask that just kind of help them make sure that they are making the correct call as they either send an employee home, refer them to their medical practitioner, or they return back to work. Chart B looks at the employees with symptoms. So if someone comes, feels like they're getting sick at school, then this walks them through, and it's always, the first steps always advise the employee to seek medical attention. If, and this has happened in a couple of cases, where an employee has not felt well, they've gone to the doctor and it was a sinus infection, or they had a stomach virus, then as soon as they feel better and are fever-free for 24 hours or more, then they have been able to return to work. In order to come back, if they test positive, they have to answer yes to all three of those questions, and you can see those spelled out. Has it been at least, in this case, 10 days since the first symptom? Has it been at least 24 hours since you had a fever without any Tylenol? And are your other symptoms improved? Marty, Marty, if you'll flip over to see real quick. This is the chart that I believe we'll probably use more as we start the school year, and you can see that if they've been in close contact with someone six feet for more than 15 minutes, and it goes through that 14-day quarantine that I spoke of just a moment ago. Even with a negative test result in this case, the guidance has been that the employee continues to quarantine for the 14 days to ensure that they don't develop any symptoms, to make sure they don't have a false negative test. Does that help? Does that answer the question?
And a follow-up to that will be, is there a student protocol? If the student tests, I know we have the employee, but what if we have a student?
Yes, Ms. Starnes, we have a document that has been produced by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, along with DPI. And literally, the title of that document is Handling Suspected Presumptive or Confirmed Positive Cases of COVID. And that document gives us multiple scenarios and how we are to address those scenarios. And the good thing is, we're, we have a strong public health department here in Catawba County, and they're going to help us navigate these issues as they present.
That was one thing that our Health Department also added at the end that I didn't allow me to share yet, but was that our school nurses have been working since March 13th. They've been contact tracers. So all those school nurses will be experts, have been working the COVID-19 cases since February. And we've, using the additional resources given to us from the state, from our CARES Act money of $100,000 to partner with the Health Department to hire six additional part-time nurses to help with contact, contact tracing. So our school nurses will have more time to help at each one of our schools. As you know, that we do share school nurses, but hopefully with the additional six part-time folks, it will, it will help, although not, not as many as we'd like, but for, given the circumstances, better than where we were.
As a, as a follow-up, Ray, if the teacher is removed from the classroom, will it be a regular sub that fills in or someone else? I mean...
Yes, ma'am. We have a number of... We have a number of subs, Ms. Starnes, who have replied that, yes, they would be glad to come back into the school buildings and work in these capacities. And so we will be working from that list to make sure that those positions are filled with qualified folks.
Okay, Leslie, your turn.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to ask one follow-up to that also, about teachers who have to be out, have to be in quarantine. Will they, does it count against their sick leave, Ray? How, how does that work?
Yeah. If they are out in the quarantine, if they're out, Ms. Barnett, and they're quarantining, they could, they could use the 10-day federal leave under the First Family Corona Response Recovery Act. And then they also could use their FMLA if, if it comes into play. But there's something in the North Carolina Benefits, Employee Benefits Manual that states the contagious disease that they could use, and they would not have to use, would not have to use their personal sick leave. We would have two options. And the, the way that works is, if they're taken out of work, of quarantine, by the director of the local Human Services Department, they would, we would have two options. We can either reassign that employee with the approval of the director of the local Health Department, or we could give them paid, they would get paid leave and would not be charged to their account.
Okay. So teachers who may have to be out, or teacher assistants who may have to be out because of quarantine on those flowcharts, they would not have to do without pay? Or use up their...
They would follow the federal leave, and they also could be subject to the, the contagious disease leave, which they wouldn't have to use their, their personal leave.
Okay. All right.
Um, yeah. I apologize, but I could add into there too, as we discussed this morning, is, we also know that some adults or students get COVID-19, they're asymptomatic, so they just have to stay out. In those cases, because they have a, they're asked to stay out, they're quarantined, they could also telework at that point. So what we would try to do is have the substitute supervising students, but if that teacher was still able to work, then they don't have to use any leave at all, and they stay at home, telework, and so that's a benefit to the employee and our kids. So I did want to clarify that.
That's a good point.
Thank you, Dr. Stover.
I know you had talked about that students who have fevers when they arrive in the morning would have to go to an immunization or an isolation room, but you said at the time that principals were trying to work out a protocol for how those rooms would be staffed and who, because not every school has a nurse. Do you have any more information on who will staff those rooms, who will watch the children who may have to go there?
Yes, Dr. Stover. That will be up to the principal to designate an individual. And, you know, quite honestly, it would stand reason that the school nurse would be that person. However, realizing that their job may be contact tracing, or they may not be at that particular school on that particular day, that won't be part of their responsibility. It will be a person that is designated by the principal. And secondarily, we'll make sure that that person follows safety protocol, which is that the child is in that isolation room. The individual that is in charge of watching that child would follow all PPE guidelines, face shield, cloth face mask, gloves, maintain adequate six feet social distancing. And secondarily, we would ask that the child also, if they weren't already, would also have a mask on as well.
Okay, so each school would have their own person, depending on what their situation is, who might be available to, to cover that isolation room.
Yes.
I know we talked before that it's not unheard of for children to be sick at school and you can't reach a parent. And, you know, when it comes time for the bus to run, and you wouldn't want to put a child with a fever, has any more been decided about what might happen in a situation like that, where children aren't picked up, or a parent can't be reached, and you don't want to put them on the bus?
Right. That they cannot access group transportation. And as a defense to that, now obviously, some children may get sick during the school day, or may present an illness later in the school day. The idea is that hopefully, we'll catch a majority of those children on their entry into school. And the way that we're doing car riders is for that those children have the appropriate questions asked and the health check using the thermometer before the parent is able to leave campus. Now, the difficulty of that, of course, is with school transportation. We cannot, we have thought through this every way possible, and we are asking that our parents will complete an attestation form, saying that they have checked their child before allowing them to be transported on the bus. And once the child arrives at school, then that health check would occur at school as well. It is difficult. Sometimes parents are difficult to reach, but we feel like with our heightened protocols and our heightened sense of awareness with regard to COVID-19, we're hopeful that our parents will be responsive and come get children that are sick.
And I guess if that doesn't happen each school, I mean, just having had that, that experience myself at a school, you just have different options depending on what the situation is?
It is. It's a difficult situation. As you well know, we've, many of us, even in this chat here, have been elementary or middle or high school principals, and I'm hopeful, again, that our heightened awareness with our national pandemic will help our parents to be more responsive.
There's, we always, we know that there's a possibility of that student being there after school, and certainly, we can wait with that student until somebody's able to come. The other part is, they can certainly call us, and we will guide them on what we can do. For example, we know that we can transport if there's somebody home, or that is, could be there at the end of the day, if it's five, six o'clock at night, then, and I've had that case before in high school, you know, you know, you know, we all have. So we can use a county vehicle to transport, and within consultation with our school board attorney, we could make sure we exercise those laws, but I'm sure that between myself and our folks up here, that, you know, I could partner up with an employee, and we could certainly transport that student on a larger vehicle, put them in the back, you know, and we could put our PPE on, as long as there was somebody at home. Obviously, making sure that we follow the laws and, and best practices. But, you know, it's never been beneath me to take students home when I was a principal in, in the county car with the school resource officer, so it would probably be no different now. But our principals do a great job with that. But you're right, we've been in those situations, and that's, that's, I would like to think, and I know that we would be able to help them in that case.
And I realize that's kind of worst case.
Right.
But I've been asked that. I've also been asked if we could address the question about the sanitizer that we use, taking 10 minutes to work, and teachers needing that time to clean and only have a five-minute break between classes.
Yes, Dr. Barnett, we've got some really good ideas from some of our principals in regard to that specific protocol. It does require a 10-minute sit time, and then you can wipe that product down. And there's a couple of ways to do that. Actually, Angela Williams, principal at Maiden Middle School... Actually, Angela Williams, principal at Maiden Middle School, had a great idea in, at a middle school and high school setting, know, knowing that we have a large number of student desks within a classroom, that we could designate some to be first period desks, third period desks, and so forth, some second period, some fourth period. That way, children aren't sitting in desks that have been accessed by another student. And then the teacher would have opportunity to spray product on those seats or desks that aren't being utilized and then wipe down before the next period arrived in that particular classroom. Another way that we can do that is manage that on a basis in which we end class a couple of minutes early, spray the desks down, complete the transition, which in most cases is five minutes at most schools, allow for another two to three minutes, wipe the desks down, and allow the children to access the seats and begin class. We've got a lot of administrators that have put together plans to address that specific issue. And they're talking with their BLTs in order to implement the best plan at their particular school.
And I wondered if either Dr. Stover or maybe Mr. Fulbright could answer a question I keep getting asked is, how can we ask children to go back to school when the school board doesn't meet in person?
Go ahead, Doc.
So, Dr. Barnett, Mr. Fulbright, we discussed this earlier. And so up until now, you know, we've been under the guidance of the governor to only have 10 in a room, and we've been following that in Catawba County schools. If you look on social media, I'm not sure everybody else is, but we don't do what everybody else does. We do what we're assigned to do. So now the governor has extended that for five weeks. However, I did put a call in to our president of our Super Intents Association asking how some boards and people were able to gather in educational facilities that I'm seeing on social media, because sometimes we do a great job telling ourselves, good, bad, or ugly. And so Mr. Hope, who is the president of that organization, has told me that our educational facilities are exempt from the executive order and that we can gather as long as we are social distanced. So that is something if the board would care to do in the, care to do moving forward, we could do that. We could, we certainly could social distance in our boardroom. We'd have to put, I think Debbie has done a great job and Billy, our custodian, measuring how many people we can put in there. Then we'd have to put overflow in another room if more people came. But I do believe, given the guidance I was given today, that that certainly could happen if it were up to the board and you guys would so choose to do that, our facilities would be accessible at that point. Ms. Davis, did you have anything you want to add about that? Well, you went, you went from off to on, on to off.
You actually were very eloquent and said exactly what I was going to say. It is up to the board at this point whether you want to have in-person meetings with the provision that we social distance. The other thing I would say is, we have been very fortunate to have Marty Sharp. I understand there's freezing moments, but we've been very fortunate to have Marty Sharp, Sharp available at all of our meetings. And I think going, although they've been virtual, they have gone very smoothly. And in fact, I would also point out that more people are able to access these meetings when they are virtual than they are in person, because a lot of people aren't, aren't able to actually attend a meeting. So this has been a benefit, I think, to the public in these trying times that we have been virtual, because everybody can can view the meetings and get more and more information. I think you've done a good job, is what I'm saying, being virtual. But you do have the right and and the authority to be in person in the future.
Yeah, I think that's something we'll be taking a census of with the board probably next week. Hopefully, we can get back in in August. We'll take a census. I'll send out a census next week and we'll make a decision.
I agree that the meetings have been more accessible, I believe, being online, that we've had more participants than we typically do in a live meeting, especially for business portions of the meeting and not just student awards. And I appreciate that we've been able to do that and appreciate Marty's work, too. I just have one more. I think this will be the last one. Could you just, could someone just speak a little bit about, I've had concerns asked of me about our K-1 programs being 100% with students there, 100%. And I know the protocols and the precautions are in place for them, but could you just address for our parents a little bit? They want their children, we know, the surveys, they want their children there, but they're concerned about how will that social distancing happen with 100% of those K-1 students being, being there in the school?
Thank you, Dr. Barnett. I'll hit that one. So the reason the guidance was put out, six feet if feasible, and I shared a document with you that probably got buried in other things, but it's also in your packet. But it's documented, has done research on children regarding COVID-19. And according to the research, children who are 10 years of age and younger, actually, if they're six feet apart or three feet apart, does not make a difference. So what we have with with face coverings. So we have instructed our principals that they could lessen the six feet margin, that six feet, according to the CDC, is measured head to head, if if they had to, if if it wasn't feasible. Several principals have been able to relocate to bigger rooms where they are able to get the six feet. It has not been able to happen in every case, though. So, but because of that guidance, we do feel safe for those students on staff. We also know that according to that research, that students, the younger they are, the less likely they are able to transmit COVID-19. And that's in the research document I gave you. That's not Matt Stover research, that's CDC research. That's, that's far above my intellect or pay grade. So, but that is definitely something I wanted to address tonight as well. I've also sent that research out to principals so they could share it with their staff as well and their parents when they got questions about that.
Thank you. And I would just like to also thank everybody who made comments today. I really appreciate the fact, as I think Mr. Fulbright said earlier, the fact that we had such huge input from parents, staff, students today. We really appreciate that input. It was respectful, it was informative, and I really appreciate that people care that much and and help advise us. So thank you.
Thank you. David?
The biggest question I still have is the data that has been presented to the board, is that going to be presented to public as well? I know they can find it for the most part, as far as the links go. But it, we need to make it easy to be able to pull up, you know, the trends for Catawba County, the information that we've been presented. Is that possible?
Mr. Britton, that's a good point. We can put, we can add to our accessibility on our website. We can do a link to our accounting government, and I think that's actually a great idea. So thank you. Stephanie is on vacation, but between Marty and I, or Marty, we'll figure that out. And we can link that on the website, but that is a great idea. And I'll tell you this to Mr. Britton, I shouldn't tell him myself, because I talked to the health department. So I'm in this every day, and I said, I told our cabinet this morning, I said, my heavens, that dashboard's been out there. And I've been looking at the Hickory Daily Record every day, when I could have been looking at that dashboard. So I think it's a great point that even the public who's involved daily in our health aspect of our community doesn't even realize such a great tool like that is out there. So we will start that on our website.
Perfect. That would be great, because I think that would be very helpful. I know it's been informative for this meeting as well. So I would greatly appreciate that if we could do that to help educate our public, too.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, David. Madonna?
I think I'm good. You guys have answered all my questions. Thank you so very much for the work that you've poured into this presentation.
Thank you, Donna. Vaughn?
I don't have any questions. I do want to say I appreciate the board and staff and Dr. Stover for allowing opportunity for us to get additional information. This information definitely ties in well with the information that I think we were given adequately when we made the initial decision to open school on the 17th. So it is helpful. It will be helpful in explaining a little more intellectually, maybe to some out there. So that's the only, only comment that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Rafferty. Becky?
Thank you. Well, some of my questions have already been asked by other board members. There remains two, though. One of them is, what is that temperature threshold that parents and students need to be aware of when they do arrive on campus?
I got my, I got my mic off first, so I'm going to hit it, 100.4.
100.4?
Yeah, 100.4 is the magic number.
I appreciate that, because I'm sure that's a question that a lot of parents are wondering, you know, and staff members and myself. My second question, yes.
Can we add that to the website since we're putting other stuff out there, too, that that temperature be posted on the website?
I think that is important.
It's in, it's in Ms. Starnes. All of that information is in the COVID-19 Safety and Sanitation Guide, which is on our website.
Excellent. Thank you. And the other question that I had was, do you think that we're going to have any problems with the class changes, where students are going to be in the hallways, keeping space? Is that going to be based on each school location, where there's going to be a directional, I guess, a circle or something, so people aren't transitioning in the same hallway? Or are they going to be given extra time to be able to transition to classes? How is that going to look for schools?
My mic. So right now, our principals are meeting with their BLTs, working out those specific instructions. Each, and I've asked our principals to create a video to send out to parents to let them know what those type of procedures will be. We do have all the hallways marked at all of our schools, and that will be a site-based decision on how they decide to move. We have, according to our recommendations from the NCDHHS, is allow extra time for transitions so that you can can do those things. You know, we, we've taught and been in education a long time, and what have you always heard? Bell to bell, bell to bell, bell to bell, we need to teach bell to bell. Well, right now, we're saying safety and then teach, and then more safety, and then, and then. So we've got to have a little relaxation on that so we can safely transition. But to answer your question, each school is working that out, and principals will be sending a video out to their communities on what that looks like.
Okay, thank you. And a final question is, students that are not participating or don't have access to recess or a gym class of some sort, or maybe banned where they could be outside, are there going to be outside breaks for students? To get fresh air, I guess.
And thank you, Ms. Britton. That will be an individual school and teacher decision. We have encouraged that for a safe face covering breaks. The safest place we know to do that is outside. And as long as it's not 900 degrees or zero degrees, I've encouraged teachers to do that, and I'm sure our principals will. And of course, there might be a rotation of something like that, especially in our elementary schools. Our high schools, within the confines of the the campus, depending on what campuses, have a lot of opportunities to get outside in courtyards and things like that. But our staff, as I've told on our live broadcasts, we certainly would encourage our kids and staff to get outside. We think it's, it's really important to mental health, social, emotional health, and physical health at this point.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Becky. Okay. Mr. Moore, you still with us?
Bull Bright?
Yes, sir. You still with us? Okay, there you are. When it comes to our buses, is there any way we can put Plexiglas between the bus drivers? Or are skidows going to be in the second seat from the driver?
So the guidance from the Transportation Division, one of the things that they looked at earlier was some type of divider between the driver and the passengers. The issue was that there's no way to safely secure something like Plexiglas. And there was a fear that any retrofit of something like that could possibly be hazardous in an, in an accident, that it could fly around the cabin and actually injure. We haven't talked about second seat necessarily as a district. The guidance from DPI at this point in time is one child per seat, and there is an allowance for siblings to sit together, which would increase bus capacity. So we haven't discussed that. What we have done is our TMS ladies in the Transportation Office have been working hard to make sure that those passenger lists for each bus have been submitted to administration so that they can determine who's coming on a A day, a B day, a C day, a D day, to make sure that we're not overcrowding those buses. We're working through that. And of course, we don't know until day one, two, three, or four, exactly who's going to be standing out beside the road. Our primary concern is to pick up children and to keep them safe to the best of our ability and to keep our employees safe, our drivers. So we hadn't really talked about second seat a great deal. That could certainly be something that we could put into practice. But we cannot, unfortunately, put up any kind of divider because the Department of Transportation, specifically the school bus section, has determined that that's not feasible or safe.
Okay, thank you. I would hope that we can leave that seat right behind the drivers vacant. That would be wonderful.
Yes, sir. It's a good idea.
One more question. It does concern the buses. Now, I understand that if a bus load comes in, the bus is going to have to go out and pick up another route, then that bus has to be cleaned and sanitized.
Not, not, not between runs. DPI has communicated that that doesn't have to be done. Between the morning and afternoon runs, they do have to be sanitized. Yes, sir.
We talked to the health department about that.
Okay.
Would you please do that?
I will.
Okay. Okay. We're going to go real quick, hopefully through a second run, in case anybody has any more questions. And I'll do the same thing. I'll pull your name out of the box and we'll go from there. So, second round. Becky, you get started.
I don't have any further questions, but I do want to just make the comment again to everybody on the board and administration, the cabinet, teachers, staff. Thank you for all that you're doing. I know there are, staff members are in their classrooms preparing now. I mean, they're eager to get in the classroom, and I appreciate that, their willingness and desire to serve the students of Catawba County. So, but thank you. I know you guys have put in so much legwork on this. And just like myself, I mean, I want everybody to be safe, and safe is, safety is our number one primary concern right now. So thank you again, everybody.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, Kathy? Kathy, any more questions or comments?
I guess, I guess I'm still, you know, just, I'm still reeling from the fact that I have a second family member who's tested positive today. So if if you guys are out there. I have a second family member who's tested positive today. So if you guys are out there and you're sick, I hope you feel better soon. It's very stressful to have it and to worry about giving it to your other family members. That's been our experience here in our household. So if you guys have COVID, our prayers are with you. We pray you all stay safe as you come and go from school and, and teach, and ride the bus, and do all the things that we're used to doing. But just, you know, wear your mask, you know, stay, keep your distance. And if you're, if you're sick, don't come to school.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Ron?
I also would like to thank teachers, staff, all the people that is involved in this, an enormous amount of people working to make this happen. I also totally agree, and I know we'll be getting something later. But I think what we need to show is the board, if we're asking people to get together and be together in a learning environment, I think we need to take our step forward and show that we're willing to be together in the same capacity as we're asking others to be. I think it's an excellent point. So anyway, again, just thank everybody for all your concerns, and that's been listed. I think we can do this. I also know that if there, or feel like that we have enough plans in place, that if something does come up, we're not going to have to do a whole lot of backtracking, and that we can implement other actions quickly, as we've demonstrated that we did on a couple day notice in March. So I think we can do it. I think it can be done.
Thank you, Ron. David?
No further questions at this time. The only thing I would like to comment was, thanks for all the emails from concerned parents and staff, everyone that sent emails to us. It does help us for making decisions. So we greatly appreciate that.
Donna?
I think we're good to go.
We're good to go. Thank you, Donna. Leslie?
I don't have any further questions, but I think the data we reviewed tonight was very helpful. And got some questions answered that I think a lot of people are wondering. And I, I think that's a compliment to people asking the questions, and those of you on your, on Dr. Stover's staff who've brought the answers to us, thank you for all that work.
Thank you. Now, for me, I don't have any more questions either. I would like to say that I think it's very important we get our students back in their classroom for a lot of reasons. You know, education, part, piece is what we're here for. There's other components to the puzzle. And to me, that puzzle is having students be able to see each other, socialize. You know, I'm really concerned about the mental aspect of a lot of our students. I have seen it and spoken to several students, and every one of them I've talked to says we want to get back. There are some that says we want to get back, but we're afraid to go back. And they've got their reasons for family. Say again to the public, every one of these board members has a stake in this game. Every one of our staff members has a stake in this game, one way or another. And I do want to say, I enjoy getting all these emails today. It kind of tickled me, kind of made me feel like we was, you know, serving the public the way we ought to be serving the public. So thank you for all the emails, and feel free to send them anytime. I know some others got bombarded, my phone probably burned up today. That's okay, I'll get another phone tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you. And at this time, we can do one of two things. We can take a census, and say we stay as is, or somebody wants to make a motion to vote, we can do that. And I'm just going to go across the board, real quick, and ask, do you want to make a motion, or you want to do a census, and let's move on. Okay, Donna?
No, we're good.
Becky? Oh, your mic's off, brother. So.
I'm sorry. I'm good. I'm ready to adjourn.
David?
I'm good.
Ron?
Good.
Kathy?
I still have concerns, but, you know, the people are ready to come back to school. And we, and like Ron said, you know, we have the ability, if something goes south, to make a different plan pretty quickly. I know our students miss our teachers, our teachers, you know, miss the students. And it, you know, the only thing I really am concerned about is the most recent outbreak at the Catawba County Justice Center. But, you know, we'll just have to see where that data leads us. But, you know, I'm, I'm good. So.
Thank you. Yeah. Leslie?
Well, I also have concerns, and I want to make sure, as everybody thinks, pointed out tonight, that our teachers and staff and students are safe. And I think we've got protocols in place for that. I wish we could please everyone. I'm glad we got to hear everybody's opinions, but I think we're giving everyone at least choices.
Thank you, Leslie. I will say, I think also, you know, Plan B does give people the choice, gives people the option. And I'm all about choice and options. You can make the choice, whichever way you'd like to go, whether in face-to-face or virtual. Okay, so the motion that we voted on, what was that date?
13th.
Was it July 13th? Chris, Debbie, when did we vote to go B? I'm sorry, mic's off.
July 13th.
July 13th, we'll stand as is. We now, if nobody else has anything else, we will need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, need a second?
I'll second that. Donna?
Thank you, Donna. Okay, across the board. Kathy?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Ron?
opposed?
David?
Yeah.
Glenn? Yes. Ron?
Yes. Good night, everybody. Enjoy it.
Thanks, guys.
Good night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.